Very well, I have not seen additional participants. So I'm going to go ahead and get started and if people join us later, then we're happy to provide follow up with them if needed. So I'm going to start just by introducing myself. I'm Marina Creswell, I'm the Senior Director of the Office of School Modernization for Portland Public Schools. Office of School Modernization is kind of a mouthful and sometimes people don't know exactly what we do, but we're essentially the office within PPS that manages bond funded construction projects. So we simply go by OSM. You'll hear us say that a lot, it'll come up in some of our materials, but just so you know, we're we're the Bond Construction Project Office. This is our first town hall for the Jefferson High School Modernization Project. We're super excited to be starting the project and kind of kicking off at this first town hall. This is not going to be our last town hall. We intend to do these on a monthly basis. We of course will have a number of other ways that we communicate to the the school community and the greater neighborhood community in the district. But we think that this is one good option for us to get information out there and to hear from folks in the community as well. Just a little bit briefly about logistics for the meeting tonight, we are going to do a presentation first. We will have a period afterwards for Q and A for comments for feedback. We're going to ask that you save your questions until after the presentation is done, simply because we might answer the question in the presentation or it might change how you want to ask it. So once it is done, you can raise your hand electronically. So that is through the reactions at the bottom of your screen. Or you can put a question in the chat to everyone, please, not to a single person. If you put it directly to a single person, it may get missed. However, there is one exception to that. We are asking that if you'd like to receive a copy of tonight's presentation and questions and answers and get put on the Jefferson Modernization Project mailing list, please put your email address in a direct chat message to David Main, who is one of the co-hosts. You can also send a request to email, which has just been posted in the chat. That is at J H S bond at PPS.net. We also have a website and you can go on our website and find the email address there. But we want to make sure that we get you in touch with us and that you can get all the information. We are going to be holding probably a mix of in-person and remote town halls in the future. Really depends a little bit on on the course of the pandemic that we are all still working through. And we will be looking to hold them at a variety of days and times just to ensure that different members of the community can attend. So there may be some that you can't attend due to timing, but hopefully others can and we'll be able to get to different voices in the community. For the agenda tonight, you'll see that the agenda is up on the screen. I'm actually going to start just by asking our Board Chair Director Michelle DePass to introduce herself. She is present in the audience tonight. Director DePass, could you do a quick introduction?
Yeah, I'm happy to. Hello, everybody. My name is Michelle DePass and I'm the Chair of the School Board this year. I'm a Jefferson. I attended Jefferson for two years, the last two years of my high school career, part-time, halftime, so I could participate with the Jefferson Dancers and I lived in the area as you had to back in the day. I so I live, I still live in the area and attended and I'm the Chair of the School Board and I'm a huge advocate for this project and really glad to to be here. I'll I'll be joining you until five, six thirty tonight.
Thank you, Director DePass. We are also going to do some team introductions so that you can get to know the folks that will be working with you on the on the Jefferson Modernization Project. We'll do a brief overview of the Bond Program. Talk a little bit about the history of the current activities and steps for the project itself and how you can get involved. We'll do a quick update on other PPS projects in the Jefferson Cluster and then we'll open it up for questions, comments and feedback. So I'm I'm going to turn it over to the team now for introductions and we'll let them tell you about themselves and then get started on the presentation.
Thanks Marina, I guess I can start out and then I'll hand it off to my teammates. My name is Steve Efros. I'm a Senior Project Manager in the Office of School Modernization. I started at PPS about nine years ago, beginning in facilities and then moved on to the Kellogg Middle School Bond project, which recently completed and now happy to join this excellent team on the Jefferson Project. I'll hand it to Keisha.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for spending some time with us. Hi, my name is Keisha Locklear. I am a little bit new to Portland, been here about a year and a half now. Originally from New York, I am a Licensed Architect. And I and I've taken a lot of ownership over this project as a project manager for this modernization and very excited to continue to work with the community. Already worked so hard to achieve to this point, so very excited. Pass it to Ayana.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ayana Horn. I am a project manager in OSM. I have been with PPS since 2014 where I came to work on the Fabian Rebuild Project. After Fabian, I moved on to the McDaniel High School Modernization Project as a project manager and I am now working on the Jefferson High School Project as a project manager. I come to this project with a background in interior design as well as strategic planning and as a PPS parent and a Jefferson Cluster member. So I come with all of those hats to bring this project to fruition and I'm looking forward to it. I pass it on to David.
I am David Main. I am the Communications Manager for the Bond Program. I have been with the Office of School Modernization since 2013, just a few months after the projects all got started. And I am extremely excited to be working on the Jefferson Project. I'm also a PPS parent and I it's this is really kind of the fulfillment of a lot of the work that we've done and we've applied a lot of our lessons learned from other projects to this one and we have a terrific team and I'm just really excited about this project. And I'm turning it back to.
We want to give Dan an intro?
We'll go ahead and introduce Dan later on. If you'd like to get started with the presentation, I think we can, we can go for it.
Alrighty, you can go Dave.
Oh, alright, so turning it back to myself. So yeah, here, this is our timeline. So as we mentioned, we, PPS is now in our 10th year of modernizing and upgrading our beloved but aging school buildings, many of which were built before World War II. And in 2012, we passed our first bond and with that, we modernized three high schools plus one PK eight. That was Fabian. And we also provided over 50 improvement projects, new roofs, seismic and ADA upgrades across the district. In May 2017, we followed up with our second bond that funded dozens of health and safety projects across the district. Plus it funded the rebuilding or modernization of three more high schools and Kellogg Middle School. And then thanks to the support of this community, we passed another bond in 2020 that in addition to a number of infrastructure projects, will invest 311 million in this community to modernize Jefferson High School. And to go into some more detail about these projects, I want to turn it over to Ayana.
Are you muted?
I was muted, thank you. As mentioned, in 2012, the Bond Program started and for that project, for that Bond Program, we did those three, we modernized three schools and rebuilt Fabian.
Sorry, you're muted again, somehow it switched on.
Oh, see, that's the difference between the computer and a little button that keeps getting pushed by mistake. Just one moment, let me put that well out of my way of my moving hands. The three that were modernized on those projects, you'll notice in the photos that upper left is Franklin, the upper right is Grant and then the one on the lower left is Roosevelt. And those projects were modernized where we take, we keep some of the historic structures of those buildings and then fully modernize them to today's standards. Where the last project, Fabian, which is a project that I worked on, was a complete demolition and then rebuild. And on a project like that, on all of those projects, we worked with community to determine what aspects of the building you would want to retain, what properties and memories and feelings within those spaces that you want to keep while still working with the edge specs to to bring you a 21st century building. On Fabian, one of the things that was important to the community was because they were demolishing, demolishing the old building, one of the things I remember the principal always saying that, you know, we are who we are no matter where we are. And so even through the swing, it was important to retain who they were as a Fabian community. And then when we come back, they wanted to still maintain the community asset and community feel of the school. And I knew that we had kind of hit upon that when I heard neighborhood kids talking about going to the public park to to play on the weekends. And then I would realize, I would drive past and realize that they were actually talking about their neighborhood school. And so when we can commute, when we can create something that still is a part of the community, that is the, that is what we're trying to do here when we work on these bonds. Moving on to 2017, the three projects that he referenced that we modernized, you'll see in the upper left is McDaniel High School. On the lower one, nope, lower, lower right then is Benson. That project is under construction and is also being modernized. The upper right is Kellogg, which was a complete modern rebuild. And then Lincoln is the lower left and is also a rebuild. And McDaniel was a project that I also worked on and then we worked hand in hand with the community to maintain aspects of the building that were really special to the community and created new parts of the building that would still maintain some of those circulation and the community crossroads within the building that people could come from all parts of the building to 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 remember how they were. And then in part of the construction, I remember we put up these QR codes through the building where you could see, this is what it is today. And then when you click the QR code, you could see what it was going to look like in the future. And then when people come back through that space, even though that those areas had been remodeled, people could steal, still feel and knew where they were in the building. You know, this used to be my classroom. This used to be where I took my first basketball shot. This used to be where I, well, no, that's not the basketball because we completely did the basketball, the gym over. But you know what I'm saying, you understand what I mean. People still remember how they felt in those spaces despite the fact that it's a a modernization or despite the fact that we made changes. When you work with community to rebuild a space, it still feels like home to you. Moving on to what we're trying to do in 2020, that will be what we hope to accomplish and what we will accomplish with Jeff. As, oh, I have it too small for myself, just one moment. That brings us to today. And in addition to the master planning for Cleveland and I W Wells, Jefferson is the primary high school modernization project that will be construction, constructed in this bond. And so we're just at the beginning of a long road, but I know that this community and that you all have been dreaming about this for a really long time. I've been living in Portland since 2019 and that's not true, 2009. And I've been living in this community since about 2012 and I know how important this is to the community. And I just want to say at this point in time that that we're no longer at the point where we're just going to be dreaming about it and it's no longer dreams deferred. We're at the point where we can create the space that helps kids thrive in this community and that's what our goals are. I'll hand it over to Stephen.
Thank you, Ayana. Yeah, so just from what you've heard from David and Ayana, you can really see how the history of the school projects that have occurred over the course of the Bond Program, the heavy engagement, the engagement with many, many diverse, different communities, how the visions and goals of these communities, you know, become reality in these modernized schools. And again, that's, that's really the goal for the Jefferson Project as well. With Jefferson, we actually began back in 2019 with what was called the conceptual master planning process. And we did a community-based engagement approach that really tried to collaborate with the community to develop goals and values that would drive what was called a conceptual master plan. So the purpose of that was to really develop a high level scope and cost estimate for the 2020 bond. Much of the work, you can see some images here, really had to do with looking at some of the unique conditions of the site, some of the constraints, obviously a lot of the accessibility issues and just obviously the varying history and additions and kind of some of the challenges with the existing structures. So the CNPC, which was this conceptual master planning committee in 2019, worked with the design team to come up with a whole set of strategies that would address some of these unique constraints, unique conditions, but also really looking at that, the unique program of Jefferson and how to best accommodate it. Now, to be clear, the conceptual master planning process was just sort of a starting point and it really is the foundation for what will begin soon with the master planning process, the master planning committee process. Some of the strategies that that came out of 2019 included kind of a heavy focus on some of the historic piece of the building, I think particularly from a neighbor or from a community and student and family standpoint in in terms of what what were the places, I think, as Ayana described, that have really important, hold really important memories for the community. And the approach during the conceptual master planning process was to remove all the additions and kind of, kind of create a modernized school around that historic piece. But of course, again, the new master planning committee process will be able to use those ideas but come up with its own set of strategies going forward. And, you know, I think one of the guiding principles, at least of that early 2019 process that came out of the the conceptual master planning committee visioning process was to truly honor the history of Jefferson as an anchor for the Black community in Portland. And just personally for myself, that had a lot of resonance for me, having worked on the Kellogg Middle School Project where that was a case where a school had been closed for over a decade. And in fact, that community in Southeast Portland had essentially lost the center of their community, the core of their community. So the idea there was to kind of rebuild kind of the community, the community voice, bring people back together to both define a new school, but also essentially a new hub for the community. And I think we're finding even today with the school open just, just a few months that it's really, it become this important center again for the community. So that that again is a powerful idea and I I definitely kind of resonated with me in the case of Jefferson. And Jefferson is also a product, a site that I worked with over several years as doing facilities, projects, improvements and so forth. So I came to really kind of appreciate kind of the role of Jefferson within the community. And of course, I think as everyone knows, you know, the core of the history and the the power and the the kind of presence of the Jefferson School and the community was its unique program, including of course, more recently, the the Middle College Collaboration with PCC, certainly a focus on health science education and very clearly the the historic and renowned Jefferson Dancers Program. In addition to those core programs, Jefferson also has a whole host of community partners that provide really critical services and mentoring to 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 Jefferson and to the community. So all of these program elements, which were considered during the conceptual master planning process, will now feed into a much more comprehensive planning process, starting with the formation of the master planning committee. So I'm going to hand it to Keisha, who will describe in more detail how that process will move forward.
Awesome. Now I I'll be going through a couple of timelines to give a sense of the life of the project and its current status. So as mentioned, in 2018, the Bond passed funding the modernization of Jefferson. And what commenced afterwards was a conceptual master planning process that consisted of a of a condensed theories of planning committee meetings whose purpose was to develop a general project scope and schedule in order to develop a budget. That recommended budget for the high school modernization was passed in the 2020 bond and after that bond passed, staffing and design team RFP developments efforts commenced in 2021. Now we're, once our project team was staffed, our first coordinated efforts as a project team was to begin reaching out and engaging with various community stakeholder groups on a one-to-one basis. We've had conversations with groups like Jefferson Dancers and Latino Network and Alvin and Vision Trust. And this was done both to introduce ourselves as a project team to the community and to demonstrate PPS's commitment to a holistic engagement process for this project. Next slide. It's, so that kind of brings us to where we are now. Currently, PPS is wrapping up the RFP valuation process for the Architecture and Engineering or AE Design and Community Engagement Team that we're bringing on board. There were seven submissions from some amazing teams. Their proposals were reviewed by valuation committee and the project will be formally awarded to the winning team in the coming weeks. Alongside that evaluation process, our team was also finalizing the master planning committee or the MPC application process, which David will elaborate on in a little bit. We anticipate the MPC to begin working on the final master plan with that chosen AE Design Team in late April and continue the work through the end of the summer. We also intend to be continuing these town hall type of meetings on a monthly basis to provide the opportunity for engagement to those who cannot commit to the master planning committee. The master plan will then be presented to the board in the fall. Once their board approval, the building and site design will then continue afterwards with a separate design advisory group into the middle of next year. So, but before we get ahead of ourselves, as mentioned, our project team is currently forming the MPC and this is part of the project I'm most excited about as project manager. Most of my practice has been in the private sector as Licensed Architect. However, one of my graduate degrees is in urban design. And so to have the opportunity to engage with the community on a project of this scale that is so crucial to the fabric of Portland's Black community is really an honor. So with that enthusiasm in mind, our project team will be recruiting a diverse range of voices for the MPC with the intention of creating a forum for complex discussion, dynamic work sessions. This committee will include students, teachers, parents, PPS staff, partner reps and other members of the Jefferson community. I'm sure there's many people in this Zoom meeting who've been part of the many of these processes of PPS before. So the MPC is an advisory committee, however, meaning that it does not give final approvals that has rest with the board ultimately. However, the master planning committee is an entity that works alongside the AE team, PPS staff and leadership and will be essential in the creation of the new Jefferson High School. So after the master plan is approved by the board, the members of the MPC can also continue into that design advisory group as mentioned. So now David will outline more specifically how you can get involved.
Great, thank you very much. So we are hoping that many of you on this meeting today and I've I've actually chatted, I think, with a few of you via email already, will take the opportunity to to apply to the master planning committee. And and I have put in the chat that the link to the website where the applications are available. And we also hope you will continue to participate in our many public engagement opportunities. You can see the QR code there. If you put your phone up to it, you should be able to also get to the to the website where the application is. And and your voice really does make a difference. We had a student who served on one of our committees not too long ago who who urged her fellow students to get involved by saying, how often you get an opportunity to lend your voice to shape a building that's meant to last 100 years? And that's, and that's really, really true. It's, it's really a great opportunity and and public engagement, if you don't mind, the next slide, Steve, is is really important to us and as part of this process. Steve, can you advance the next slide? Great, thank you. I'm sorry, I was also looking to, I apologize. So we, public engagement is extremely important to what we do and and we want to hear from you. And your voice will really make a difference. And it will be something that can help shape how this school is formed. We had other students who came to both the Roosevelt and Franklin Grand Openings who then walked through the school and were able to sort of point out things that they actually talked to the design teams and the architects about and and got to see the, you know, what they said actually in concrete. So I would highly encourage you to join the master planning committee if you can. If you cannot, there'll be other opportunities. We have the monthly town halls as as you are participating in now. We also will have several public design workshops. These usually take place on a, on a Saturday morning for several hours and you get to work with the design team and go through different exercises with them to basically talk about things that are important about the school as it exists today, things that work, things that don't work, what you'd like to see that would be better. And and those are also really great opportunities. So when when we start to schedule those, after we get a few master planning committee meetings under our belt, we'll probably begin the scheduling process for those and we will keep you informed about that. Also, our mailing list, as we've talked about before, please reach out on that with any questions you have on around the project and we will get back to you right away with answers on that. And of course, the website. So I thank you and I want to turn it over to Ayana, thank you.
Hi, back again. That leads us to the full project timeline. As you'll see here, spring of 2022 through spring of 2024 is the totality of the planning and design process. It's a two-year process that's in-depth and includes in community engagement and feedback and where we're sharing with you what we've learned. And then we take that back to the designers and then we bring it back to you. And then there's a feedback loop that continues on for two years that then brings to fruition a full design. And then in the summer of 2024, construction starts the two-year process and which leads to a fully renovated, fully, fully new, modernized Jefferson High School in the fall of 2026. And so that was kind of a fast look at a construction and modernization timeline. But what I want to end on this slide saying is more importantly is like personally, I can say that there's no greater joy and honor than to work with you and taking your napkin sketches and your dreams and visions. Personally, I can say that there's no greater joy and honor than to work with you and taking your napkin sketches and your dreams and visions. From where we are like today, when we're first sort of envisioning. What this can become to seeing on that this slide where you see in fall of twenty twenty six when we do the ribbon cutting. And so if we can just take a moment to like picture what that day is going to be like, it helps propel this process forward if you just keep your eye on the prize. And um. And now, having done that. Twice. It is just so fulfill. My God, how am I getting emotional? This is crazy town. Um, it is, it's really fulfilling to do this work and I'm just really honored to be here. And starting this journey with you guys. Um. And I'm turning over to Marina because I can't keep talking.
Thank you, Ayana. Um, that. Ayana really demonstrates how much we are invested in this project and so. I appreciate that. We are all um. I s- I'm gonna say we're all very excited about the work to come. Um, we know that it's going to seem like a long road ahead when you start talking about years of designing construction. But there is so much that occurs during those years. It is going to go by very quickly and. Um, we are thrilled to be part of the project. We are very much looking forward to working with the community to. Um, to to bring this to life. We are completed with this part of the presentation. We do want to acknowledge that there are other PPS projects that are occurring in the Jefferson cluster. I'm actually going to turn it over to. PPS Chief Operating Officer, Dan Young, um, to ask if he can provide just a quick update on on those other projects.
Uh, thank you, Marina, and good to see everyone. Yeah, just real brief. Uh, briefly, I want to head on to other things. So in addition to Jefferson, there are two other projects uh, that are happening in the neighborhood. Uh, one of those projects is the twenty twenty bond funded Center for Black Student Excellence. Uh, as some here already know, the center is is envisioned as an interconnected through line of educational strategies and plans student outcomes. Starting with early learning and extending all the way through high school and beyond. Um, and the center is not one singular campus like a like a physical center. Uh, but rather a geographical community and culturally affirming strategies aligned towards promoting black student excellence. Uh, the center's strategies are still being fully defined, but they are intended to align with Jefferson's academic programming and master planning efforts. Uh, so right now, the center's project team is focused on developing a thoughtful and robust stakeholder engagement plan. Uh, and refining the center's comprehensive vision. Uh, we anticipate that opportunities to collaborate on the center's planning efforts will be shared here pretty soon. Uh, and additionally, there will be opportunities for stakeholders to discuss the relationship between Jefferson modernization. Uh, and the Center for Black Student Excellence. The the physical facility improvements, the stuff specific to the bond that support the center. Are expected at a variety of schools in North and Northeast Portland. Any of the physical facility supports. The center needs a Jefferson will be incorporated into the Jefferson plan. Uh, the other project highlight briefly is uh, one of Jefferson Cluster's feeder schools, Harriet Tubman Middle School. Due to the expansion of I five, which is immediately adjacent to Tubman, PPS is reviewing potential new locations for Tubman. Uh, people may have heard that the state has recently uh, awarded a hundred and twenty million dollars to support this move. Uh, right now, the district is in process of engaging community members and listing feedback on a number of potential new site locations for Harriet Tubman. It's worth noting to this group that one of the many options being considered is co-locating Tubman on the Jefferson campus. Right now, staff are just analyzing this option, identifying potential pros and cons and constraints and et cetera. Uh, and we anticipate that or we are planning on having a more detailed discussion about this option and others uh, in the coming weeks and months. That's it.
Thank you, Dan.
Hmm.
We are, uh, as a as a team, as a Jefferson team, we continue to be. Uh, embedded with the efforts um, surrounding Tubman in the CBSE. So we are certainly well coordinated to ensure that any impacts are um. Made part of the the Jefferson master plan and design as we move forward. We are pretty much done with the presentation portion of this and. We do want to open it up for question comments or feedback on the Jefferson project. Um, we will try to answer as many of those as we can uh, tonight. If we can't get to things, we are um, taking down those questions, whether you're doing them um verbally or you're putting them in the chat. We are going to take note of that. We will put together a document that summarizes all the questions and our answers to those questions. And as I said before, if you get on our mailing list, we'll make sure that you get a copy of that. Um, we will also be posting it on the website. And so I'm actually going to turn it over to Keisha to. Um, facilitate the the question and comment um, portion of tonight.
Yeah, thank you so much, Marina. So how this will work is pretty simple. If. You guys have any questions, hit that reactions button and raise your hand and we can start there. Or we can go right to the chat. There's a question here. Can you describe the commitment level to being on the master plan committee? Okay, we can start there. Steve, I'll let you uh, answer that question.
Yes, so um, this is something we will begin kind of coordinating and planning for with the design team more directly when they come on board. So there'll be. Kind of a a detailed uh, schedule and plan and ultimately a series of um. MPC meetings. Um, you know, the meetings themselves can last a couple hours. Um. They uh. They can get into a lot of detail. So I think you, you know, if you're planning to participate. They're typically or they're often kind of evening meetings. It's just sort of being kind of. Mentally and physically prepared to kind of really engage, which I I think is an exciting process, but uh, certainly. Being available to attend all the meetings, I think, is is one of the criteria and um. You know, the other part that we'll be considering is just sort of um, getting a diverse uh, kind of membership and. As representative of membership as possible.
Okay, great. Um, thank you so much, Steve. The next question is, are you anticipating? The kids will move off-site during construction? If so, do you know where? Um, I think we're gonna have Marina answer that question for us.
Thanks, Keisha. One of the things that came out of the conceptual master planning process was just how important it was for. The Jefferson students to remain close to where they currently are because of the program. Um, the middle college program that interacts so closely with PCC. So um, between that and a a couple other constraints that come along with trying to move an entire school full of uh, kids. Um, our plan currently is focused on keeping students on site. Um, in uh, temporary classrooms that are oh, not. Um, in the construction area that they will still be able to complete their work. Um, they'll not, they'll be kept safe. They won't be surrounded by hammering and all those sorts of things. Um, but they will continue to stay close to those programs. Now, that can of course change during the comprehensive master plan. But that is the intent right now. And as I said before, there are some other constraints that do go into it. Um, it is typically very challenging for us to move an entire school and we have limited options to do that. So. Um, that will certainly be part of the conversation as we go through the comprehensive master plan, but our focus right now is is to keep them on site.
Okay, thank you, Marina. Um. You're welcome, Allison. Does anyone else have any questions? Don't think I see any raised hands.
Keisha, I just raised my hand.
Oh, there we go. See you.
So I I wanted to ask Dan a little bit more about the uh. The Tubman move and. And then is that a is that something that's gonna like be a permanent thing where? Tubman would be a part of the Jefferson High School. It would be Tubman, Jefferson together at the same site? Or is that temporary?
Yeah, that that's a really good question. So what we're looking at right now is is a new, we're looking for a new permanent home for Tubman. And our target is to have Tubman moved. It's based upon the O dot construction schedule. So we've got a little bit of time, but to have its new uh, in its new home by fall of twenty twenty seven. So we're looking at, say, probably ten sites in detail. We've looked at well over twenty sites total. Um, but one of the options is considering relocating it uh, permanently. On the Jefferson campus. And so what we're just looking at right now is what are the constraints, what are the potential pros, the cons? Uh, and benefits around that. So it's still, you know, early on as far as what that might ultimately look like physically and and how those schools might relate. Uh, but wanted to bring it up here just so people know that that is one of the topics that's being or options being discussed. And we do have a series of meetings uh, and documents that we're we're going through that reciting discussion.
Can I add a little bit of context to that just because it seems like a random um. Move potentially and that's that. Um, in order to move a school, you need to have the site, a a perfect ideal site is six to nine acres and it's also ideally in the catchment area. And it's ideally, you know, got utilities on it and it's, you know, blank land is ready to go and there isn't that piece of land in the catchment area. As we're urbanized. And so um, the board and community members are looking for alternatives and also we want to do a development without displacing a historically black school. So. Now we're looking at, you know, our options are getting uh, more constrained and. So we said, you know, in urban environments, you have sometimes you co-locate locate school programs together. That's how you do it in. In other cities that are bigger, that also have um, don't have a lot of land, like, you know, six to nine acres. And so the it's like literally just being explored right now as a potential. It it may or may not happen. Um, but it's because it's because that's what the board and the community, we've we've heard that. This development, this moving of Harriet Tubman ideally, you know, it's got all these ideal um, conditions that we're not able to meet. And so the next. Level down in our decision-making is to look at. A co-located pro- program and 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 they're actually very, um, I attended a co-located program in in Guadalajara and. And in big cities, you'll see, um, you'll see schools co-located uh, sometimes on the same campus.
Well, no, they tried that a little bit. With with Michelle with when they did the Young Men's Academy, the Young Women's Academy. And actually, that's one of the reasons how I came, because I was. Administrator over the Young Men's Academy and they did that here at Jefferson and Young Men's Academy was up on the third floor and. Rest of the school down the floor and the other, so it was, that was tricky. It was kind of like a school within the school and it didn't really work, so.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I I don't I don't think I knew that history. Um, I appreciate that your your experience with that. You know, from an administrator's perspective, that it's challenging to have. You know, but but uh, it it could also be a campus, a shared campus, like like the Nike campus has different buildings within. Or something like that, too.
Right. Marina.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Looks like there's one in the chat.
Gotcha. Given that the Jefferson MPC is forming and looking to start in the next month or two. When would a decision about co-location be made? I think that's a question for Dan.
Yes, and that's a very good question. So we set an early target of uh, hoping to identify Tubman's new location by roughly. Uh, end of May of this year. So within the next couple of months, there is some flexibility to that. Uh, one of the reasons that that target was set because there is the original. I'll say assumption or target of acquiring and negotiating a new property purchase will take time. If it ends up being. On a property that is already uh, under PPS's control, we'll have a little more time to decide ultimately where Tubman will go. But the I'll say the short answer is to make that decision here within the next several months.
Laura. You're muted, Laura.
Thank you. I know you mentioned in your presentation a little bit about the intersection of Jefferson planning and um, the black stu- the Center for Black Student Excellence. Um, can you? If you're able to like talk a little bit more about that and when that might happen? Because I know that when everybody presented to the PTSA, that was a kind of an important topic that came up.
Yes, and thank you so much for that question, Laura. I think I'm gonna let Marina answer that question for us.
Thanks.
Actually, I I see Dan is just waiting to.
Okay, there you go. Go ahead, Dan.
No, not not a problem. And that that's a great question, Laura. So the center right now is focusing on developing the. The community engagement plan uh, and stakeholder engagement plan that that they look to enact. And then one of their. First uh, focuses is going to be really defining what is the center? What are the strategies, the educational strategies that the centers is intended to create and what are the student outcomes that they want that come out of that? So it's going to be a a discussion around what is the center? And that will very quickly follow on to where is the center and what physical supports are those are needed for that? And the center itself isn't uh, intended or envisioned to be one place or one building, but really this kaleidoscope of different strategies and so. And improvements. And so as it becomes more defined of what the center's goals are and then how facilities support them. That will then be embedded into the various projects and the various sites, including uh. I into the Jefferson modernization and and we have total confidence that whatever physical supports that the center is going to need, that the Jefferson project will be able to. Accolyptums.
Can I just go follow up to that, Dan?
Sure, absolutely.
Um, so as it sounds like. It, you know, they're like in a, their timeline is a little bit different. Um, but. As they're ready to engage with the community, will um, that team also be kind of connecting with the different schools? Yeah, um, to get community input. I know it's a different team. Um.
Yeah, that my expectation and understanding is that they're trying to develop a really thoughtful outreach plan where they're going to the different communities and the different stakeholders, the different schools, those feeder schools, the students and families that will be directly. Uh, benefiting from the center and reaching out and having those direct conversations and partnership developments. We know that this isn't going to be. Just a PPS-led effort. It's really going to be a community and partner effort. And so their their goal is to be very intentional about those conversations. Uh, and about the development of these outcomes.
Thank you. So Jefferson should be hearing from them at some point.
Absolutely. With with certainty.
Thanks.
Their team has committed to collaborating with our team, making sure the community receives a holistic engagement process. Okay, Margaret.
Good evening, everyone. I um, it's good to see you folk. Laura, it's good to see you. Um, thanks for uh, taking some time tonight and I I'm. I'm, Richard jumped off before I got to say hello to Richard as well. So um. I think that one of the things that I I'm I'm hearing, I wanted to make sure Keisha from something you just said, like when we say it's a holistic approach. I guess one of the questions that may be helpful um, as we as we uh, move forward with uh, the confluence of these three um. These three projects at the same time. It's still the same community, right? And the groups of communities. So if there's a way or a space to have the various community outreach or various pieces, kind of like at one in one space so that it is. People could go to one spot and have links to other things, but that there is a calendar that people could see may be helpful. About how that engagement process is is happening in these various pieces to try to help braid the. The streams of communication together. So I don't know if that's that may be what you mean by holistic, but maybe if if there, if you could speak to us a little bit more. Um. Too holistic as well. And I know there's some other folks on here that are have uh, long historical ties to Jefferson and I can't see everybody on the list, but. Um, I'm just super excited to be having the conversation. I know um, coming back into uh, working through the conceptual master planning process and whatnot. It had was really a um, it was a moment of uh, real um. Sense of possibility, created a great sense of possibility in the in the community and just realizing, you know, going from possibility to. Um, fruition is like uh, is very exciting. So just appreciate people's time tonight as well.
Thank you, Margaret. Um, I'm gonna just step in real quick to say, um, I think that's a great idea to to. Have one. Have one location on the website that people can go to to find out information about the three different projects. We'll certainly talk internally about how we can do that. We have started having the conversation about how we can. Mesh some of our community engagement, which is to say that each of these is a very complex project. And there's probably a lot of detail, more so than we want to do all, all of them together. But there are overlapping aspects. And so it's going to be a little bit of like figuring out what things we do together. And what things we're doing separately, so that we can ensure that we're, we're, we're getting the attention to detail for each of the projects that we need to. But I definitely, you know, taking to heart the, the note about making it easy to, for people to find information about all of them. We'll go back and have some conversations internally about how to do that. Thank you. Keisha, you're on mute.
Oops, so sorry. There was a follow-up Tubman question. Does PPS still own the site that Whittaker Middle School was on? And has that site been considered for Tubman? Yeah.
Uh, yes, PPS does own the Whittaker Adams site. And it is, it was, it has been considered for Tubman, but it is, it is well outside of the existing catchment area.
I don't see any other hands up.
It looks like Principal Ellen had his hand raised.
I think it was just still raised from before.
Yeah, yeah, I'm good. Those are two questions I had.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other questions from the field? In the chat?
Um, David, do you mind putting the email address in the, in the chat again? So if anybody has follow-up questions that they think of after we close out for tonight. They can still send us an email. Thank you. And then we will go ahead and, you know, put together, we'll put something on our website. So you have the presentation available. If you want to go back and look at that, then we will send it out to the mailing list as well. And we will summarize the questions and the responses. And get those out to the mailing list and post on the website as well. And as I said before, we are going to have monthly town hall meetings. That's this. While we have given you sort of an outline of the different types of community engagement that we're hoping to do, that doesn't mean that's where we're stopping. We are continuing to think through other ways that we can reach out and. You know, get in touch with members of the community who aren't necessarily reached through this type of forum. So similar to wanting to do this meeting at different times and different days. So that we can reach different members of the community. We'll also be looking at alternate ways of reaching out. So if you have ideas, if you have a group that you think would be a good contact for us. To do an informal discussion or to do a presentation, please reach out to us and let us know. We're certainly out there looking for all of those, but if you're out in the community and you know people. Let us know too. We want to reach as many members of the community as we can. So I just wanted to say thank you again for joining us tonight. We really appreciate your time. And we will be posting more information on the website. We'll look forward to hearing from you and, and giving you more information as we move forward.
Thank you so much, Marina. I think we're going to end the meeting now. Thank you, everyone, for your time and enjoy the rest of your evening.